Live.
My on mic?
Yes.
Welcome, everyone, to the special meeting of the Council on Aging. We're going to be discussing bylaw revisions. So this is the first time our regular formal meeting that we always do. Okay, and we're ready to start at 11:10 this morning. Okay, thank you for all coming. And the forum has been established?
Excellent. All right. All right, folks. Thank you, Ron. Thank you all for being here. The reason that we're here today is to just review the bylaw revisions that were suggested and recommended by the law bylaw revision committee. That was comprised of Paul Mioni, Paul Crowley, Terry Hillman, and Ron Dermetka. We spent a lot of time, and we spent a lot of time going through these, and they will be somewhat complicated. I'm going to try to make it easy. You've all received packets. We posted the packets of the bylaw revisions. The notice has been out for about a month for folks that wanted to weigh in. We've had no comments, no indication of interest. So with that, you should have the new revised copy of the bylaws in front of you. What I'm going to present are the bylaws in total. So you're going to see the old script, the new script, all together. And it may be a little confusing. I would just ask and encourage you, if you have any questions, to please, you know, ask at the moment you have them. All right, Establishment. Article one, Establishment. The real reason we're doing this is to identify the COA as a municipal board. We don't really clearly identify that in the 1960 edition of the bylaws. So the only change in section, Article one, is to add specifically the recognition that the COA is a municipal board. Article two, the purpose of the change is to bring similar aspects that existed in the bylaws under one category and broaden the purpose of the COA to include all of the tasks that we do, including operating the senior center. Our old version didn't have that. So we took the COA's primarily advisory. That was in another section. We merged it into the purpose and expanded the purpose to read. The basic purpose of the COA is to provide access to senior resources, social and service programs, health and wellness programs, and other such programs necessary to serve the senior population. The COA will coordinate with other city departments, organizations, companies, or agencies who serve the senior population. The work of the COA includes, and some of this text had already existed in the previous version of the bylaws, identifying the needs of the elderly population in the community, educating citizens, enlisting the support and participation of all to meet the needs of elders, recognizing such assistance, designing, advocating for, and/or implementing services to fill these needs and/or coordinating existing services. These all existed. This is previous language that has not changed. We added to the cognizant of state and federal legislation and programs regarding elders. We added operating a senior center to provide access to programs and services to the Gardner senior community. And we added a provision to this existing one, cooperating with the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs and the Region Two Area Agency on Aging, and programs of the Commission on Aging, established under section 73 of Chapter six of the General Laws of Massachusetts. We added that provision, right? And that's just some language that's oil and clay for councils on aging all across the Commonwealth. The Officer Section, this was offices. This specifically identified our offices at 294 Pleasant Street. So rather than having to go back a year from now and modify the bylaws again, what we did is a more broader approach to where our offices are. So the principal office of the COA shall, to the extent practical, be located within the Gardner Senior Center, the Charles P. McKeen Building, at a location so designated by the mayor and city council of the City of Gardner, Massachusetts. So the city council is going to make that determination when we move. They actually have to vote on allowing us to go to the new building. That's going to be on record, public record. So that'll be our new location. All mail shall be delivered to this address unless otherwise another shall be specified by the director or offices of the COA. So that's a pretty easy one. All right, Membership. So we had in our existing bylaws, membership categories dispersed all through the document. But there was some confusion as to what a regular member was an appointed member by the mayor and what were the other categories allowed. So the first thing we did is recognize the process that we have been using for many years, which is application. Anybody who's interested in being a member, whether it's a regular member or an associate member, has to do the application. So prospective COA members must submit to the chair or the CEO of the COA, a board member, application for review and consideration. After consideration and approval by the COA, such prospective COA member shall be considered nominated, right? Shall be considered nominated. And that's important because there is a second step in the process once nominated and recommended for regular members. They have to go to the mayor and the city council for appointment and confirmation, although associate members don't. And we're going to talk specifically in this section what that looks like. Section two, the Membership Types. Appointed members shall consist of seven. It said appointed before. I mean, it didn't. It just said seven members, appointed members. So we recognize there are seven members that are appointed by the awarding authority. No person so nominated as a regular appointed member of the COA is to serve until appointed by the appointing authority, the mayor, subject to confirmation of the Gardner City Council. And then we wanted to tighten up the terms. And there was a restriction on the number of terms. And we thought, well, if people are willing to serve and able to serve, why not continue to let them? But also put in later in the bylaws a provision to remove people who may not be showing up, may not be effective, may, you know, have ill will towards the COA. So upon expiration of their respective term, which is three years, any regular appointed member of the COA may be considered for reappointment by the mayor, subject to the confirmation of the city council. So every three years, we're up for reappointment anyways. And there was a term limit of three three-year terms. Then if you took a year off, you could do three three-year terms. I'm like, well, that doesn't make sense. So, and this group agreed. We're taking out to comply with our previous recommendation and vote to remove the seated positions for the Golden Age Club and the AARP. We're taking them out of our bylaws. It's been removed. It's in the ordinance and city charter. So we have to be consistent. So we're striking the two COA board members, which are exempt, shall be the Gardner AARP president and the president of the Gardner Golden Age with full voting privileges and shall serve until his or her office is terminated, expired, subject to the same rules of nomination. That's gone, right? So that those two seated positions, though. We're also taking out, this is that issue I was saying about, like the term limits. Appointed regular members, each regular appointed COA member shall serve for a three-year term. And then in the previous paragraph, we talked about you can, you can get reappointed for another three-year term by the mayor if you want. And we have taken out serving no more than three consecutive terms in succession. An appointee may return after a one-year hiatus from the board. Such person shall be appointed under rotating persons and that not less than three new members shall be appointed annually, each for a three-year term. By the way, if you do the math, that's nine members. We only have seven. So that, that didn't make sense either. So we, we, the group decided that that was something that really wasn't relevant, pertinent, or needed anymore, and asked that that be stricken. Membership Types. Regular appointed members must be registered voters of the City of Gardner. That's a requirement in the city. We didn't put it in here. And as a result, we've had some confusion who could be appointed by the mayor and who couldn't. Associate members can be a representative from any senior service organization that serves the seniors of Gardner, even if they're not Gardner-based. But a regular member has to be a voting member, a voting citizen of Gardner. The second membership type is affiliate or associate membership. This used to be Article 11, right? So we had a membership type category, Article, Article three, but we didn't talk about associate members in the old bylaws until Article 11. It makes sense to put them together so you can see and compare the types of membership within the same category. So we're taking Article 11 out and moving it now into Article four, Section two. The COA may establish non-voting affiliate or associate membership or advisory committees. Affiliate, associate, or advisory members are non-voting members of the COA. This is a really important consideration. It's a bone of contention sometimes among us. Our COA members, regular and appointed, all have the same ability to discuss, to lobby for, support, anything that comes before the board. Only in those matters that are contentious and may, you know, really require a legal document to vote. We're still doing the votes and recording the votes. So we want our associate members to know that your value and your input is valued. We haven't come across anything yet that's required us to segregate or separate associate members and regular members' votes. Nancy, do you need me? Yeah, let's go with the, let's go with the forum. All right. Continuing on the affiliate or associate membership and advisory committees, such membership may be comprised of representatives from the community or area and/or from organizations whose activity, experiences, or expertise relate to the COA. That makes sense, regular and associate member. Presiding officers or chairs of recognized senior citizen groups within the city shall be eligible to participate as affiliate, associate, or advisory committee members. Other membership categories are possible and may be established by the COA from time to time as needed. So that affords us the opportunity to be flexible and be responsive in the moment. Continuing on affiliate or associate membership, such affiliate or associate members, identified in Article four, Section 1A, shall be seated at the next meeting of the COA following a vote of approval by the COA. Now, that's appointed. Regular members, we're going to talk a little bit. We talked a little bit about their seating, how they are seated. They can't be seated until the city council approves them as a regular member, right? So insofar as possible, Section four, under Membership, this is board, this is the COA. And by the way, just to clarify, when we talk about the COA, we're not talking about all the people that participate here. The Council on Aging is this group and only this group, all right? Just so that we're all clear. So anytime we talk about COA, we're talking about regular members or associate members of the board. Insofar as possible, COA membership shall be composed of at least 51% of persons 60 years of age or older. We don't have an issue with that. So we just took out some superfluous language, shall reflect and make up of the community at large, and shall become, we just said, hey, you got to be a senior in Gardner. And I hope that we can look at as part of our continuing efforts to recruit some DEI issues, how do we ensure that we're diverse in representing all the populations that exist in Gardner? Article four, Article five, Voting Rights and Responsibilities. This really creates a structure in this article and clarifies how votes are considered and cast. And you're going to see we added a little bit of stuff that some folks may say isn't needed. But all of our chairs and officers are typically non-professional volunteers. Like, they're not professional board people, right? So they don't know necessarily how the votes are taken. And we thought this might be a nice construct to help them navigate running meetings. So equal representation of voting members. This specifically says every member has a single vote. You don't get two votes, you're not counted more. All voting rights shall be vested in the regular appointed members of the COA, and each individual member in attendance shall be entitled to one vote with respect to any question or matter that may come before a meeting of the members of the COA. One of the things we struck in this provision is voting in person because Massachusetts general laws absolutely allow for any municipal board, which we are, right? We're not a, we're not a nonprofit, unaffiliated board. We are a municipal board that any member of the municipal board may request to participate in their meeting virtually. And we've also addressed that in this bylaw. Proxy votes. This simply says that you can't give your vote to somebody else, that you have to have your vote in, in person, whether that's physically in person or online, or, or, I'm sorry, virtually on Zoom. No proxy votes of the COA are allowed. Members absent may not vote on any matter before the COA during that absence, nor authorize any member or person to vote on their behalf. So I can't come in and say, geez, I talked to Joe Schmo. He's really for this, so we're going to cast the vote in favor. No, the person has to weigh in at that meeting, again, either virtually or in person. Article five, Voting Rights and Responsibilities. This three is really to create a structure in the article again and clarify how votes are considered. The chair of the COA shall decide the method of all votes before the COA is described below. Except, the chair shall use an all roll call vote when specifically requested by members or in the event that a member is attending the meeting remotely, as provided for in 940 Code of Massachusetts Regulations 2910, which is included in Article six, Section 4B. Votes shall be captured by the secretary or the designee in the official record of the meeting. So, you know, really, this says the only time a roll call vote is required is when there's somebody attending virtually or somebody, one of the board members requests it. And then we literally have to record what every single person's vote is on that matter. So here's some procedure. We just put in common voting methods, general consent or unanimous consent, which is what we use most of the time. Use for routine or non-controversial matters. Objection is raised by a member of the COA, a formal vote is required. A voice vote is measured by the volume of voices. The presiding officer calls for the affirmative vote first. A negative must also be called. So that's, I keep poking, you know, Sandy and Ron. After you say all in favor, you have to ask who's opposed, whether it's by general consent or voice vote. Rising vote can be a show of hands or standing or some other way that people can, can demonstrate outwardly their vote. So a rising vote, a show of hands, or a standing vote, where members collectively have their vote counted. The roll call. Each individual eligible to vote is called and asked to state their vote out loud in the affirmative and the negative. A secret ballot can be used as well. That might be for the ouster of the director or something, you know. Vote is done privately using ballots. After the vote is taken, the chair must also procedurally request a motion to destroy the ballots. So that is, it's funny. We're like, we can do the vote, but not a lot of people know that there's actually a requirement to get in the record that vote to destroy the ballots. It must be seconded, a vote taken by the COA, and then accounted vote, the number of members in favor, opposed, and abstained is recorded in the minutes. And we do a blend of those. We usually do general consent and accounted vote as a blend. Voting, Article four, Voting Rights and Responsibilities. Unpaid municipal employees. This provision is a longstanding provision. It's been there forever. We just tightened it up a little bit. All COA board members, appointed and associated, are unpaid municipal employees. As municipal employees, all COA members and/or COA employees shall not exercise his or her vote or take any action in violation of the State Conflict of Interest Law, Mass General Law, Chapter 268a, Sections 1 through 3, 8 through 10, 17 through 23, not 23a, 24 and 25. And we're going to strike. The Council on Aging employees are, of course, also subject to conflict of interest laws. It doesn't have to be in the bylaws. The bylaws are about the Council on Aging, not the staff. The staff are already obligated under law, and they get that as part of their onboarding and training. There is a typo in here, and I'll make sure that's corrected if somebody just makes a note of that in Section four. As I have it printed, it says, and it should be any. Or take any action in violation of the State Conflict of Interest. Article four, vote, Article five, Voting Rights and Responsibilities. Section five, Representations by COA Members. Understand that this did exist in our bylaws before, was formed in Article seven, Section six. No member of the COA or staff shall, instead, we're going to strike shall and say is authorized to make written or oral representations for the COA unless specifically authorized by a vote of the COA or in pursuance of job requirements. There might be a second typo. There we have both twice. Paul? Paul, did you, did you grab a mic? I'm sorry. Or should I have told you that first?
I don't believe it makes any difference.
Perfect. Then we'll leave it. Thank you. All right. Article six describes the types of meetings the Council on Aging has. Remember, this provision existed in the previous bylaws. But we want to more clearly define the types of meetings and the requirements for such. So we have our regular meetings. Today, for example, is not a regular meeting. This is a specially scheduled meeting for the purpose of reviewing the bylaws and doing board orientation. Regular meetings of the members of the COA shall be held on the first Monday of each month. So we're just striking out once per month. This is what it used to read. Regular members, regular meetings of the members of the COA shall be held once per month on the first Monday of each month. It was redundant, so we're taking out the redundancy. We're practicable with the following exceptions. When Monday falls on a legal holiday, the meeting scheduled for that day shall be held on the following Monday. We've added, or within 10 days, because our practice has been if we can't do it on the next Monday because of programming, we schedule it for the Tuesday following. But as long as we do it within 10 days. When the appearance of an invited municipal official or other agenda noted guest of the COA conflicts with the scheduled meeting, that's an existing article. And we wanted to make sure we're specific. There is no regular scheduled meeting of this COA during the months of July and August. That doesn't mean we can't meet as long as we call a special meeting. So there's no regular meeting. There are 10 meetings, regular meetings, per year. Regular meeting notice, like, what are we required to do to let the public know and our participants know? In accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, Chapter 39, Section 23b of Mass General Laws, the Council on Aging Secretary or the Senior Center Director, and I think we've changed that now to the CEO to make it consistent, shall provide at least a 48-hour notice and posting of its meetings. We have to give at least two days, which means it has to be posted by Thursday for a Monday meeting. All agenda material, including financial reports, that be included in the notice sent by normal or customary methods, included but not limited to United States postal service mail and/or email to all members. This is an important provision, and I appreciate the group's attention to this because it used to say we could only send this by U.S. mail. And now we're sending it by, we are able to do any customary method. And email now is a customary method. So we don't have to nail things out. Yes?
When it says we have to be within 10 days.
Yep.
What is the, what happens if we meet in the closing?
Yeah. I would assume for the purpose of the meeting, if we don't hold the regular meeting within its scheduled time, that meeting has to be canceled and all that business referred to the next regular meeting.
Because we could have had a flood or.
Correct.
The power was out.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's, that's typically what happens. The other thing that can happen is the, the chair can call the meeting to order with no one in attendance because no form is present, adjourn the meeting to the next rate of time. That's a good question. All right, so that's the notice. The second type of meeting we can have is a special emergency or executive session meeting. These meetings of the COA may be called at any time by the COA chair at the request of at least three members of the COA. Now, it's interesting. The old bylaws said by three members or a majority. Who guessed what a majority is? Three members? Yeah. So it didn't make sense to have that in. So we said, it's funny, three members or a majority. I'm sorry, a majority is four. So it's three members, which is less than a majority, or a majority. I'll do it at the, at the easiest threshold, which is three members. Special emergency executive session meeting notice shall be delivered by normal or customary methods, including but not limited to U.S. postal service mail or email. It must be sent to each member of the COA at least three days prior to the scheduled meeting time. 48 hours, we're doing 72 for special meetings. In accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, Chapter 39, Section 23b of the Mass General Laws, the Council on Aging Secretary or the CEO of the COA shall provide at least a 48-business-hour public noting and notice and posting of any special executive or emergency session meeting. That's different from the first paragraph. The first paragraph is notice to board members. The second paragraph is notice to the public. And every meeting we have, for the purpose of deliberating, must be public. We're going to talk a little bit about that in our orientation. The third type of meeting we have is the annual meeting. The annual meeting of the COA shall be held on the first Monday in May to coincide with the regularly scheduled monthly meeting. We're practicable for the purpose of, and there was a provision in there, reappointing, and we're taking that out, just simply for the purpose of electing officers as needed. And we didn't have this in before. So there was a requirement or restriction on our May meeting that only allowed us to do the election of officers. We're putting in this provision that allows us to do any other business as may properly come before the COA, right? That makes sense? Annual meeting notice, just like our regular meetings have to have notice, our special meetings have to have notice, the annual meeting has to have notice. So notice the annual meeting stating the purpose which the meeting is called and the time and place where it's to be held shall be sent by normal and customary methods, including but not limited to U.S. service, U.S. postal service mail, there's another typo, and/or email by the COA secretary, the CEO of the COA, or their designee to each COA member, not less than 10 days before that meeting. The annual meeting is the election of officers, so we need to make sure that everyone knows that that particular thing is happening and give them plenty of notice to let us know they're interested in officer position and to promulgate that information to our members. Annual meeting notice, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, the CEO, secretary, or the CEO of the COA, the COA secretary, the CEO of the COA shall provide at least a 48-business-hour notice and postings of the COA annual meeting. Notices for the COA annual meeting shall be posted in a conspicuous place at Gardner City Hall. We have taken out informing the community, because that's what public notices are for, to inform the community, and we've also stricken or published in a local newspaper for general circulation because we don't have one anymore. And now it's a regional newspaper, and the cost of that is exorbitant. But through social media and other online, we're getting a much farther and bigger reach. So it really doesn't have a significant impact to not post it in the newspaper. This is a whole, brand-new provision under meetings and the members' attendance removal and resignation. There were no provisions in our old bylaws for resignation and removal. And what do we do if somebody should leave? So regular attendance is expected of all COA members. That's an obvious one. All members of public bodies. And this is that provision I was telling you about that allows for, specifically allows for folks to weigh in on Zoom if they're so interested. All members of public bodies in the City of Gardner are permitted to participate remotely in meetings in accordance with all three requirements described in 940 Code of Massachusetts Regulations 2910, addressing permissible reasons, the type of technology allowed, and the procedure for using the technology. Any and all costs associated with remote participation, there should be a little known. It is in your bylaws, I'm sure, shall be borne by that member. Members requesting attendance remotely must notify the CEO or the COA chair at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Members participating in any meeting remotely shall be considered in attendance. All votes required during the meeting while the members participating remotely shall be captured using a roll call vote of the members, right? So we talked about that earlier, when a roll call vote is required. We're just reiterating it here. Section C, in the event of an absence of any member for three consecutive meetings, and it used to say, or six absences in any calendar year, we just removed that to five because six is three quarters of our meetings. So five absences is half, except as provided in the section for health or extenuating circumstances, as duly reported and approved by the chair in advance. So if somebody was having a severe health condition, we can give them a long-term leave from the board. we can give them a long-term leave from the Board. For folks that just find it inconvenient that don't come, there's a provision now to allow us to kind of remove and replace them. Such absence shall constitute an automatic dismissal from the COA, and the COA through the Chair or the CEO shall recommend to the appointing authority that person be dismissed as a member from the COA.
I don't think you need paragraph A.
Regular attendance?
You're defining what that is, paragraph C.
Okay, yeah, and so make a note of that. We'll discuss that at the end. I will tell you from a management perspective, if I could say that 500 times in the bylaws, I would. Because I don't know that people really understand like when they're not in attendance, it has implications, so.
Well, you can use it as a lead in paragraph C.
Right.
Just make a simple.
Okay. Just make a note. And then notwithstanding the foregoing, when a regular COA member becomes ill or is in failing health and is unable to attend, commit to attending meetings on a regular basis, the COA through the Chair or the CEO of the COA may request the member resign their appointed position and with the approval of the Council on Aging, be accepted as an associate member. What that does is it ensures we always have a quorum, right? So that our regular members who have a long-term absence and don't really have any good indication of coming back, we can fill that with somebody who's active and be able to do the business with the COA. In the event a regular COA member wishes to resign from the COA, the COA shall not consider such request unless it's made in writing to the Chair and to the appointing authority, the mayor. In the event an associate COA member wishes to resign from the COA, the COA shall not consider such request unless it is made in writing to the Chair. So here's what happens. If somebody wants to resign, we can't at a meeting say, oh, well, Mike Ellis said he was going to resign. Let's make a recommendation to have Steve Ellis replace him. We can't do that until we have the resignation in hand and the position is vacant. Similarly, with an associate member, the whole idea here is to really make sure that we're not adding people with the expectation somebody's going to leave and then them come back. By the way, we're not restricted from taking them out if they miss three meetings. So if somebody wishes to resign and doesn't give it to us in writing, three meetings later they don't show up, the COA can take that up as a matter and remove the person from the board. Quorum at all meetings of the COA, the presence of a simple majority of the total membership, of the total members currently seated in an attendance shall be necessary and sufficient to constitute a quorum. So a simple majority is more than half, 51, for the transaction of any business. For any vote of the COA, there must be a quorum, so there must be at least four members of regular voting members provided for in this section. Votes shall be cast only by members in attendance. Remember, no proxy votes. We go back to Article Six, Section Four. Conduct of meetings, there was a provision, and for me, I didn't even pay attention to it, but the group did, and they said, hey, do you know our previous bylaws required we run the meetings by Robert's Rules of Conduct? I could probably do two and a half paragraphs of that four-inch book. There are so many nuances to it. So we're just changing. We still want to have the construct of Robert's Rules, that Robert's Rules of Order shall be used as a guideline for all meetings of the COA. We're practicable. And removing the strict requirement that all meetings shall be conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. Right, this makes for the management of the meetings a little bit easier. Section Seven used to be resignation. We're removing the resignation section. We're moving it up to Section Five in Article Six. Section Seven will now be minutes and record-keeping. The Secretary is responsible for complete and objective record-keeping for all meetings of the COA and votes taken by the COA. The COA shall ensure that meetings are captured using normal and customary practices, and such records shall be made available to the public, except if we're prohibited by law or practice. This is an interesting dynamic because our traditional way of looking at minutes is in writing. Well, we have a second way of recording minutes now, and that's the audio recording. And we upload those along with the transcript on the internet. So somebody can actually watch and listen to what's happening at the meeting, or they can look at the summary minutes that are required. So this is just reinforcing that idea that the minutes belong to somebody, that the Secretary or their designee can do that. All right, Article Seven, Officers, the more clearly defined officer and executives and their roles and responsibilities. An interesting dynamic here, by the way, there was never a job description for the Chairman in our old bylaws. So we've added that. The officers of the COA shall consist of a Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, Clerk, and Treasurer. Officers of the COA shall be elected for a one-year term at the annual meeting of the COA and shall take office at the beginning of the new fiscal year, which is July 1st. So they're elected on the first Monday. They don't take office until July 1st. Officers can serve multiple terms, so they can serve 10 years in a row now if they want. Only appointed regular members of the COA are eligible for officer positions. An appointed regular member of the COA shall be a member of the COA for at least one year before becoming an officer. That allows us to have some continuity and understanding what the job entails. This next provision, there's been no change. Election of officers to fill vacancies created by death, retention, or other cause may take place at any regular or special meeting and shall be for the unexpired term of the previous incumbent. However, the office of Chair, if vacated, shall be filled by the Vice Chair for the unexpired term of the Chair's term of office. The position of Vice Chair is then filled by election. And again, even when I started, there was confusion when a board member resigned their officer position but not their board position. Folks weren't sure if they were taking over their term of office for their appointment to the COA or their term of office for the officer. We're making it very clear that you are taking over just for, you know, when you're elected, from then until June 30th. Paul?
Ellis will point.
Sure.
Any appointed regular member of the COA shall be a member of the COA for at least one year before becoming an officer. There could be a situation where the mayor comes in and wipes everybody out, and there is no officer, so that precludes that.
This might prevent that from happening.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
So, you know, if you're worried, we got you covered. Yeah, that is a nuance that would be interesting to see. I guess if all the officers resigned, then the COA could vote to bypass that provision.
Who would say all resign?
The new ones? I don't know. So we added the officer job description. I'm going to just rattle through. This is standard boiler contract or bylaw language for COAs all across the state. The Chair shall preside at all meetings of the COA, shall appoint persons to serve on all committees, shall be an ex officio member of all committees. Committee members may but not need to be members of the COA. So members on the committee don't have to serve on the Council on Aging. They can just come from our senior population. The Chair shall be elected for a one-year term. It may succeed himself or herself if elected by the COA. The Chair has the right to vote at all meetings. The Chair may not serve on the nominating committee. The Chair shall ensure that each member of the COA shall be given a copy of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Open Meeting Law currently set forth in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23B, upon being sworn in or elected. The Chair shall ensure all members of the COA complete ethics law training and other such training as may be required by the city, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or the COA in general. Vice Chair, the Vice Chair position is pretty much left the same except we're putting the same provision. The Vice Chair can serve a second year if, or third year if they want. During the absence or disability of the Chair, the Vice Chair shall exercise all the functions of the Chair, and when so acting, shall have all powers and be subject to all the restrictions of the Chair. The Vice Chair shall be elected for a one-year term and may succeed himself or herself if elected by the COA. The Vice Chair has a right to vote at all meetings. Section Three, Secretary Clerk, this existed before. The Secretary Clerk working with the COA CEO. This is important. The reason we put this in is, is as you know, we provide a lot of administrative support to the officers. And we want to recognize the fact that the Secretary isn't bound by law to do this uniquely and singly on their own, that they have some support. So the Secretary Clerk working with the CEO of the COA shall record or cause to be recorded all proceedings of the meetings of the members of the COA, attend to or cause to be attended all corresponding notices or similar activities as directed by the Chair whereas voted on by the COA. Ensure all notices be given in accordance with required policies, procedure, laws, and four ordinances, including but not limited to the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Review annual reports or filings prepared by the CEO of the COA to the Mayor, City Council, and cause to be filed. Any required reports to state agencies, governing authorities, or regulatory bodies, including but not limited to the Executive Office of Elder Affairs. Perform all duties relevant to the office of Secretary Clerk. The Secretary Clerk shall be elected for a one-year term and may succeed him or herself if elected by the COA and be responsible for the retention of records with the Secretary State's Record Retention Schedule. And this is an old dated one, so we just took the dated one out and just referred to the schedule in specificity. The Treasurer, we added a lot to your job description, Terry, just so you know. The Treasurer, again, working with the CEO of the COA, shall have oversight and supervision over funds, securities, and receipts of the COA. Keep or cause to be kept all the books of accounts of all the business and financial tractions of the COA. Support the CEO of the COA in the preparation and presentation of financial statements. And we put some specificity, including year-to-date and monthly expenses and income of each COA account at regularly scheduled meetings or any other meeting specifically called for the purpose of financial position of the COA. And we have stricken cause to be presented at the COA regularly scheduled monthly meetings or any meeting specifically called for the purpose of reviewing the financial position of the COA, financial statements for the COA, the financial condition of the COA, including its grants, funds, and line balances, and of all the transactions as Treasurer. That's included in the year-to-date and monthly expenses, and it's never been reported out in that kind of detail or specificity. And just another little side note before we go on. While the Treasurer has this responsibility, we also have a city treasurer and auditor that review and audit our books for allowing allowable expenses and permissible use. So there are many redundancies built in, but they're not specifically part of the COA, so we don't speak to their job function as relates to oversight. The Treasurer supervises the quality of accounting and reporting of financial reports to the COA. The Treasurer is, represents, so it's be prepared to, is stricken, represents the COA in financial matters at meetings at city officials and city council meetings. Remember, we're going to go back to that first line that says, in partnership with the CEO. So they don't have to do it as long as it's covered. But if the CEO of the COA isn't going to be there, the Treasurer needs to be there. Review and assist the CEO of the COA with the preparation of the annual operating budget for the Gardner Senior Center that is submitted to the Mayor and the Gardner City Council for their consideration. The Treasurer is elected for a one-year term and may succeed him or herself if elected by the COA. And at the conclusion of their tenure, return any financial records that may be in their possession to the COA. But everything here, because we're a city, everything goes through the city accounts. So there were several references in our old bylaws to the CEO, but again, there were no specific requirements of what the CEO is, who he was, or she was. So we put in this, Section Five. The Chair with the approval vote of the members of the COA shall appoint the Senior Citizen Director to be the CEO of the COA to terms of three years corresponding with the Senior Citizen Director's regular appointment by the Mayor. And similarly, at the end of three years, if I'm not reappointed, then I can't serve. The COA shall have charge of business affairs and property of the COA and its general operations. The CEO shall render and prepare an agenda in conjunction with the Chair that conforms with Article Two, the purpose of the COA. The CEO will render at the regular scheduled meetings of the COA in consultation with the Treasurer the financial condition of the COA. We're going to strike the following. The Chair shall assist in preparing with the CEO, Senior Citizen Director, an agenda that conforms with Article Two, the purpose of the COA, and preside at the CEO at the COA meetings. We put that into the Chairman's job description, not the CEO's job description. And we're taking out the city. The city clerk isn't a member of the COA, so there really shouldn't be a reference to what the city clerk does, nor are we allowed to. And bylaws are a legal document, so somehow we would have to be able to enforce this if we can. So we're striking the city clerk or his/her designation shall ensure that each member of the COA shall, upon being sworn in, be given a copy of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23B, Open Meeting Law by the City of Gardner Clerk. But if you remember earlier on, there's a requirement that the Chairman does that. So we're leaving that as a provision for the Chairman. And by the way, the clerk also does that, but we can't require the clerk to do that, right? All right, Article Eight, Board Staff Relationship. This article did exist before. It was Article Nine before, so we're just changing it. COA, Board is primarily advising. Remember, I told you that existed somewhere else here where it was. We've moved that now up to Article Two. The COA shall not interfere with the supervisory day-to-day management activities of the Gardner Senior Center, right? That's not our job. No COA member shall make requests to the staff for assigned duties. It's the Senior Center Director's prerogative. COA members as designated by the Chair may assist with job searches, interviews, or recommend candidates to hire to the appointing authority, the Mayor. And we do that. The Chair has served on the search committee. And we also use COA members to meet with applicants. We did with Nancy, we did with Vermin. And then last, communication other than emergencies. It's stricken, and we've reworded Section D to say, official communication shall be directed to staff through the COA Chair, right? So anything that's coming from the Council on Aging, not the Senior Center, the Council on Aging, that includes policies, directives, changes to our programs and services that the COA offers, has to come through the Chair. Article Nine, which used to be Article Ten, to more expressly, we're changing to more expressively, expressly, define what types of committees may be created and the process by which they're created in the COA. So we added this provision, the COA or the Chair of the COA. So the Board can vote to do this as well. May establish standing committees, working groups, or task forces as deemed appropriate and necessary by the COA for any purpose, including to study issues, develop programs and services, obtain funding, or make recommendations to the COA. COA members shall serve on one or more committees, make sure you sign up before you leave today, appointed by the Chair. Each committee, working group, or task force shall have a written statement of purpose and functions. Article Ten, which used to be Article Eight, Amendments. You know, amendments should really be at the end of the bylaws, not in the middle of it. And it used to be in the middle of the bylaws. So Article Ten will more concisely state how amendments are made to remove conflict in form requirements between simple majority and supermajority, to remove conflict between city and bylaw doctrines. So amendments or alterations to these bylaws may be considered at any regular, it is to say at any, either or, regular, but it doesn't matter. It can be considered at any regular or special meeting of the COA called for such purpose. So notice has to be given that an amendment is being made, and there are special requirements of that. So you have to specifically say, if you notice the agenda, we had to detail all of the changes we were making in that agenda. So it has to be very specific. Notice of the general character of the amendment, alteration, or action, haven't been given in the call for the meeting. Notification of meeting and its purpose shall be given at least 14 days prior to the meeting. It says meeting assembly. Oh, it's the meeting, right? So we just took out some redundant wording in that. Continuing on amendments, accompanying such notification shall be a summary of the proposed action, the full text of the proposed amendment or alteration, and a statement of the purpose of the proposed changes. The proposed amendment or alteration of the bylaws must be approved by a simple majority of the members of the COA. This is really important because before, it used to say, a simple majority or two-thirds. Well, a two-thirds majority is a supermajority. So, you know, all of our other quorum requirements are a simple majority. We figured, you know, we don't have 40 people on this Board. We have seven. Getting a supermajority would be difficult, and there was conflict between what the wording said. So we took out supermajority and just left it as supermajority of the members of the COA. If any provision of these bylaws are in conflict with any municipal law, bylaw, or city charter, the bylaws in the city charter shall have precedence. And then the effective date is just to update the amendment change date to whatever day we vote on it. And I'd put September, but it could be, you know, today. Yes, Paul?
The section of the bylaws that says that no COA board member interferes with the staff.
Yep.
Well, if the CEO is a COA board member.
I'm not. No, I'm an officer, but I'm not a board member. That's really the point. The Senior Center Director is not a board member. Remember, there are seven appointed members of the COA. Those are distinct and separate from the Director. Yeah, the Director serves as an administrative management function, but not a voting member of the Board. Yeah, good point, good clarification. In fact, you could have meetings without me. Don't do it.
We need to report, so you have to be there.
All right, so that is the proposed bylaw changes. Questions, concerns, docs, any issues? Yeah, it was a lie. I want to just take a minute and thank, again, the folks that did it. This was a heavy lift. I mean, we literally went line by line. And any of the myths, the typos that were in your text are truly my fault. But the whole context revisions was substantial. I mean, it was substantial. So thank you for taking the time and making the effort to do this right.
Who did it?
So that was Ron, Paul, Paul, and Terry. Those are the four.
Does it go to the helpful reading?
Nope, not the bylaws, no, no. All right, let's bring it to, back to you, Mr. Chair.
All right, we're going to close this partly, not yet.
We have to vote to either accept or reject the proposed changes. If I may suggest that we entertain a single vote on that motion, whatever the motion is. So whoever makes the motion, if you would be so kind to make that motion to say that your motion is casting a single vote for the proposed changes, or we can go change by change if you would like to do that, whatever your preferences. We just did it, yeah.
Go ahead. I just got a couple questions.
Sure. Use the mic if you would, Paul.
Oh, yes.
I'm loud enough that people can hear.
So am I. Section, Article Four, Section C. Section, Subhead will be A. This seems to be, you've got regular CEO member and then about them resigning. That was my point. And you then look at D. It's like those two sections, there's a little bit more clarification on what's a regular member and what's an affiliate or associate, I'm sorry, an associate member.
So if we, if you all go to Article Four, which is on page two, Membership, the first section just. section just talks about the application of process for client, but then the membership types are very specifically detailed. Section A is appointed regular members, and Section B is affiliate or associate members. I'm gonna read the new text and see whether or not you agree, whether there's an understanding. The COA shall consist of seven appointed members. No person so nominated as a regular appointed member of the COA is to serve until appointed by the appointing authority, which is the mayor, subject to confirmation by the Gardner City Council. Each regular appointed COA member shall serve for a three-year term. Upon expiration of their respective term, any regular appointed member of the COA may be considered for reappointment by the mayor, subject to the confirmation of the city council. Regular appointed members must be a registered voter in the city of Gardner. The affiliate membership category reads as such. The COA may establish non-voting affiliate or associate membership or advisory committees. Affiliate, associate, or advisory members are non-voting members of the COA. Such membership may be comprised of representatives in the community or area and/or from organizations whose activities, experiences, or expertise relate to the COA. Presiding officers or chairs of recognized senior citizen groups within the city shall be eligible to participate as affiliate, associate, or advisory members. Other membership categories are possible and may be established from the COA from time to time as needed. Such affiliate or associate members shall be seated at the next meeting of the COA following a vote of approval by the COA. All right? Does that make more sense?
No.
No.
If you look at C, Section C, and then, sorry, where Article am I at? Article V, Article VI, Article VI, Section, Section IV, C, and then Subhead is A, and also Section, and also D.
Article VI, Section IV, which is on page five.
It says, "Notwithstanding the foregoing, when a regular CEO member becomes ill or is in failing health and is unable to commit to attending meetings on a regular basis, the COA, through the chair or the CEO of the COA, nor request the member to resign their appointed position. With the approval of the COA, he is accepted as an associate, and with the approval of the COA council, not council on aging, he is accepted as an associate member of the I think where my confusion is, is that when you say, "When a regular CEO member..." So...
So, let's go back to the definitions are clear on what a regular member is, though.
Right, right. If you look at the bylaw, on the section, there's appointed parentheses, regular members.
So, yeah, so that, it's, the definition is there. So, if you look at the definition, and I'm just gonna, I'll give my explanation, and then we can counterpoint. Membership type are regular appointed members. So, regular appointed member are the seven members appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council, and this provision specifically talks about the seven appointed members. If any one of those seven regular members, it doesn't say regular or associate member, it's talking about the regular members. A regular COA member becomes ill or is in failing health, and is unable to commit to continuing on as a COA member on a regular basis, then they can be requested to resign their permanent regular seat and become an associate member. So, we still have them active and engaged and participating, but not eliminate and preventing us from meeting the form requirement. So, the wording is the same, we might be able to tighten that up a little bit by putting regular appointed member, but, or put a proviso in there that, you know, throughout the bylaws, when regular or appointed member, it shall refer to a regular appointed member. I mean, we can put that definition in, but that's what it means.
I think it should be delineated, because you later on in that paragraph, A, talked about being accepted as an associate member, so I think if you put a point to regular, or something where it delineates, because...
I don't, I, under the same section, Paul?
I don't know, I don't know.
All right, so, because I think that's the problem, is you're trying to blind sections, and that's why the sections are specifically set apart, so that they don't blend. One talks about membership categories, right? So, what is a membership category? And the next talks about resignation by particular categories. So, there's nothing in Section VI that relates to associate members.
Hold on a second, I don't, because on Section II and Article IV, membership types, if you looked at it, it says A, appointed members, B, affiliate or associate membership, and that seems to be two official titles of the membership.
That's, it was the two that we have right now.
Right, those are two. So, when you say regular, you have regular parentheses, when you mentioned regular, it's brought the rest of this, is regular regarding any of the appointed members, just the appointed, right?
Yeah, I think we would, we have been pretty consistent about using the term regular appointed collectively. We can, I can certainly make that change and say, wherever appointed is, that regular is added to it, and wherever regular is appointed is added to it, so that it says regular appointed.
I think that'd be a good idea. I know what you mean, but I'm thinking if somebody was going to read the bylaws, and they were placing, you know, what's this regular, what's this affiliated, what's this associate, what's this appointed?
And I would refer them to Section IV.
I do, I do, it would be confusing to somebody who's not familiar with this.
Yeah. Well, I don't find a problem with that, we'll just make sure that that's an easy.
Yeah, that's, you know, I got it, all right.
No problem. Mr. Crowell?
Page nine, Section V.
Yes.
Do we need to add more clarity in there, is that the CEO is not a board voting member? What section?
Section V, Chief Executive Office. Yeah, I mean, I think the answer to that is, I don't know. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. It doesn't exist now, the practice doesn't exist, but it would certainly make it easier for the next person to look at it and say, "Oh, all right, you know, I serve on the board, but I'm a non-voting member." So, Advisory Two.
I think there was a certain paragraph, right?
Or it could be an advisory or an affiliated membership of the board which is not voted.
Right.
Would that require you to send a form to the mayor asking to be an affiliated member?
Nope, nope, we do not, so the only ones that require the mayor's approval, and as are particularly in the bylaws, are the seven regular appointed members. So, it's the only ones that have to go to the mayor. The Council on Aging has full purview and ability to appoint anybody else.
I know, it seemed to allow you to participate in meetings as an advisor.
So, the two proposed changes are to, and we can make those changes and bring them back to this program for the final, if we'd like to, so we can table if you want, or the motion that's made would be to accept the, or reject, the proposed changes with the following members, wherever regular or appointed is, the two words be constructed together, and the second is to amend Article V, or Section V of Article VII, to reflect that the CEO is an advisory, non-voting member of the board. Yeah, so those would be the two.
Let me just say, well, you had a good point about, on the membership, I think under the, under the, we're in line, under the appointed regular membership, just have a line saying that regular appointed members will be here for, you know, for the bylaws, for regular members, all I take is one line. So, there's no confusion if someone's reading it.
I'm confused, why do we have to have our CEO be an appointed member? I think, I think, gosh, now we're getting into too much.
No, no, he's not, he's not an appointed member. No, no, that, no, no, Paul is saying that the CEO serves, to make it clear for future generations, that the CEO serves on the board, but is a non-voting member. And that's always been our practice, and, you know, certainly, if the chair ever wanted to, we could call an executive session and eliminate any non-appointed members from the, from the meeting, we could do that. So, that would include...
But Paul is saying something about having to have the board do the mayor.
No, no, he asked if it had to, no, it doesn't. He asked whether associate members had to be approved by the mayor, they don't have to, we, yeah, we got that.
But he's saying the CEO needs to be...
Nope, 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 he asked, and the answer, the answer is no.
I'm getting into too much conversation. Yeah, no, no.
Nope, so, yeah, no, the answer is, he was asking whether or not we would have to, we don't have to. No, that's perfectly legitimate. So, those are the two, anything else? Anybody who wants to add to that?
I would like to see that more, I'm still confused, I think something's trying to sleep. I mean, the CEO, I want the CEO to be the CEO, I don't want any...
So, Paul, Josh. It probably, excuse me, Nancy, it's probably in that, I have, I mean, it's...
Right.
Just tell me, show it to me.
He's not appointed.
Nope, I'm not appointed, no, no, that's, so Terry, just, so Terry is concerned, and I didn't hear the whole context of the conversation, as to whether or not we are suggesting putting a provision in the bylaws that make the CEO an appointed member. And the answer is no, clearly no. There are seven appointed members, the CEO is not one of those appointed members. The CEO does serve on the board, though, in advisory capacity, and the point that Paul made legitimately is, should we more specifically clarify that relationship to the board? So, the CEO, as the CEO, not Mike Ellis, that's the senior center director, but the CEO serves in an advisory capacity to the board, as an associate or advisory member. That makes sense, it does make sense. So, that, just to clarify, and the reason I'm clarifying it is because I'm louder and the camera will pick me up, you didn't use the microphone, so they may not have heard what you said.
Sorry.
So, I got it. Any other questions, concerns? All right, so we're still looking for a motion to either accept or reject the bylaws as presented with the following two amendments. It'll shut off in three seconds. Folks, I apologize, that's my phone on the other end of the room, they're ringing. Probably something important, like my Amazon order back to live.
Amazon, good, all right. Can we make a motion to vote the bylaws as a poll, and with these two corrections? Because I mean, you have minor corrections.
Yeah, so, so I, I might suggest that if that's what you're asking, Paul, to respond specifically to your question, that the motion might be then to cast one vote to accept all the recommendations with the two amendments that were discussed. Specifically, that the regular appointed members, that terminology could be used consistently throughout the bylaws, and that the CEO be defined as a non-voting member, associate member of the board.
I need to make that motion.
All right, the motion is made then. Look for a second on the motion.
But, but, but...
Use your mic, please.
You're saying he's an associate member, so I, I don't know, I don't, I just don't like getting all those terms mixed in there. He is our CEO, and that's what it should, to me, that's what it should be. It shouldn't be saying, so we've got to vote him in as an associate member? That's what you're saying, you just said, an associate member, you said it.
No, I was saying to delineate the two different types of membership, which is the appointed membership, which he put as regular membership, and that is the associate membership, that's the two types of membership. I want it to be delineated in the beginning, so that during the rest of the bylaws, this like, regular members shall do this, regular members shall do that, but what is a regular member? I want in the membership part to say that the regular members are, the appointed members shall be known as regular members throughout the bylaws.
And the second part of this motion was actually recommended by Paul Crowell.
I don't like the second part.
Okay, so, we got this.
Which, which second?
Paul?
What if we change it just to say that the CEO shall be a non-voting advisor to the board?
Yeah, that's all. He's not an associate member, he's not an affiliated member, he's not an appointed member, it should just be stated that he is an advisory member of the board, right? Am I wrong?
Thank you, Paul.
The word advisory, you're right, I mean, he, I mean, I know he does advise them. I just, you know, I hate, you know, we're getting into all this extra verbiage here.
Yes, I know. We took out a lot of verbiage, that's, that's really what we did.
Yeah, but I just want it to be known that we have a CEO in the...
And that's probably what we're voting on, is the vote to say that.
And then we all know, but I don't want any other verbiage in there, that he's got to be appointed.
No, there's none of that, I guarantee this, right?
Well, your, well, your motion does, does have two parts, well, has three parts, to accept the changes, to have that consistent language of regular appointed, and the third is to identify what the relationship is between the CEO and the board, and that is a non-voting advisory member, or in a non-voting advisory capacity, let's say that.
Non-voting advisor.
Advisor, yeah.
Yeah.
Non-voting advisor to the board.
And shall be a member of the board as the CEO.
All right, so, just to clarify, if you are agreeable to the amendment, Paul's amendment and for you, Ron, is to cast one vote to accept all the changes proposed with the following two amendments, which are to make sure that we use consistent language of regular appointed members throughout the bylaws, and to insert a provision in Section V of Article VII, that the CEO is a non-voting advisor to the Council on Aging.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Any discussion on the motion?
Do we have to, do we have to revote on this again? After we see, you know, they put it in? Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay, can I have a show of hands of who was in favor?
Didn't see your hands. Yeah.
She's not sure she could vote.
So, the way we're gonna record this, for folks, is we will record the appointed members' votes, and then we'll record that the vote was unanimous among all CEO members, so that's how the minutes will reflect that vote. Because I think it's important to acknowledge the input and participation of the associate Just, yeah, go ahead, we'll be, I do have one other board business for you, Mr. Ron, again. We have two associate member applications for consideration. We can do any other business that is normally allowed before the board at any meeting, so I would ask if we could consider it at this meeting, and it's totally up to you, and then have them seated in September if you're agreeable. The first application came from Denise Whitney. Denise Whitney is the administrative, I don't know, not clerk, she's like the second in charge of lifelong learning at Montrose Community College, she's been there for thirty years. Her expectation was to retire this year and ask to be on the board, but after, you know, looking at her life circumstances and wanting to work more, she's extended that, but the president has given her permission to serve on the board if we are so inclined. Long lifetime member of the Gardner community. The second application is Julie Bean from the Gardner CAC, an intimate partner with us, and, you know, really brings a lot of resources and kind of personality to the building and our services. I think most of you know Julie, I won't go on too far. Both I would certainly recommend, and I want to let you know in a balance, we've been notified a third person has asked to be on the board, but I don't have his application yet, and that's Keith Aubin from Integrity Medicare. I really expected it today, but I either, I haven't gotten an email when he sent it, and I haven't had a chance to check, or it's not there. So, know that that will probably come up in September.
Okay, any discussion of what Michael has just mentioned, because I, myself, I feel that we should go along with it, have it come in, so we'll be having fresh new faces when we start our meetings in September.
These are all associate, something.
Why don't we do each one separately?
Okay, first person will be Denise Whitney, is everybody in favor?
No, we need more.
No, we're all separate.
And make a motion that we'll vote.
Except.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, go ahead, the second.
So, you're doing both of them at the same time, Paul? Denise and Julie, or just one at a time?
I would do one at a time.
All right, so the first one is gonna be Denise, just to clarify, so I understand? All right.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Any dis, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second is Julie.
Okay, next one will be Julie Meehan.
Oh, I'll make a motion, and we accept it, actually.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Ready to oppose? All right, we're all set, so we have two new associate members coming in, and we'll send out a letter to them, and let them be notified that they'll be here starting in September. And, yes, and our next meetings in September, the week after Labor Day, so, it's the Monday after Labor Day. Okay, very good. I have a motion to adjourn for this portion of the meeting.
So I move that we, I move that we adjourn from this meeting.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, let's go on in.
All right, let's take a break for a minute. So, our lunch may be delayed a bit. Nancy just came in and let me know that our credit card was, was declined, but I guess that's the...
Shut that off.